Meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopment's Accessor Agency and Financing Authority. The council did not meet in closed session this evening pursuant to Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty. Members of the city council and staff are participating in this meeting via teleconference. To reduce the spread of COVID nineteen, members of the public have been asked to watch the meeting on live stream through the city's website or via Wave Cable Channel twenty. And to submit comments and writing by six P M. On the day of meeting to the city clerk's email address in the public comment section. All comments that have been submitted are then posted on the website right next to the agenda and video streaming for the meeting. So that the full text of all public comments are available to members of the public. And there is no time or space limitation on those comments. So in an effort to increase the level of transparency and public access during these during the subemergency period. Those comments are available to all. We will also note during the meeting when those comments have been received and each member of the city council has a full and complete copy of all of the comments that have been submitted. So we're going to this is a meeting, one of our meetings on general topics, including COVID night, the COVID nineteen situation, but also the other city business that is pressing at this time. We're going to proceed to item one A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do.
All right.
For item one A, we received public comments from Alex Hirsch and Mary Dejean.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And both of those comments, as with all others, are available at the city's website and each member of the council has them before them as well. Right. Item one B is council communications relevant to the assignments that we each serve in on behalf of the council in the city. So are there communications or reports from these agencies from members of the council this evening? All right, I would simply the SecoX Strategic Planning Committee did meet on Monday. That's the essentially the executive committee for SecoX. And in order to hear a report on the impact of the COVID nineteen situation on SecoX Priority Work Program and the planning efforts underway, also the funding round that is coming up for cities and counties in the region. And also to revise its strategic plan. The Transportation Committee will be meeting tomorrow in order to begin work on the funding round, which I think our expectation was the funding round will be over one hundred million dollars of funds available to local cities and counties for transportation projects in the region that are for which SecoX acts as the allocating agency on behalf of the state of California. And, you know, the federal government as well. And I know our team is at West Sacramento has been working hard on applications. We've always been very competitive in those in that for those funds and fully expect to be this round as well. All right. So item one C, we have we are deferring appointments to boards and commissions. So that brings us then to the consent agenda. Are there any items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove or any item for a separate question or comment?
I'd ask for, I'm sorry, item six, a comment on that.
All right. Any others? All right, then. Item six is consideration of a proclamation declaring May twenty twenty as Mental Health Awareness Month, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to my colleagues and everybody. Hope everybody's staying safe and healthy. But in the spirit of healthiness, I just want to commend staff for again reaching out to the community and bringing attention to that may is Mental Health Awareness Month. This has been an important part of council's priorities for the past few years. And I can't think of a more year, a more important year or time to bring awareness to this. And I think we've all, all of us on the council who've been out in the community, working with individuals with neighborhoods and those who are trying to cope through this, either through the impacts from a health standpoint, the impacts of being sheltered, or the economic impacts that folks are feeling. There's a lot of stress in our community. Folks certainly are warranted. These are stressful times. And it's a good important point to take, take, take a moment, reflect on the services that are available to you. I know the county has made available through their mental health crisis and access line that's available. Twenty-four hours a day is one aspect of it. And I know Supervisor Viegas has worked hard to bring those county services to the city, but there's, there's other services that are available. And I'd urge everyone to kind of, as we learned from our friends in the restaurant business who take stock of checking in with their friends, checking in with family, take stock of asking, making sure everybody's okay. If they need help, certainly the Yellow County does have services available. Also through providers and the providers here in our community, many are helping people today. So just want to say thanks to staff for bringing this back to our attention, hopefully the community. And can can help bring awareness to this and and certainly help the community members get there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ambassador Ledesma. Very, very well stated. And I know I'm, I'm very proud of the work that the, the city, both city government, but in partnership with the county and nonprofit organizations have been doing, but also so many residents and volunteers and others in the community that have stepped forward on this issue and the leadership role that the community and the city have been taking. So what I acknowledge, you know, Councilmember Guerrero, who has served on the, the county local mental health board prior to joining the city council, has been, you know, active in this issue for a long time as well. And we're just really blessed in our community to have a wide array of leaders and volunteers and care providers. And then just regular citizens who support one another, look out for one another, and have been educating themselves about how to, how to also take care of themselves, but also to, to look out for signs and signals in order to help connect family, friends, neighbors, and others to the kinds of services they just described. So thanks for, thanks for bringing this back to our attention. All right. So there's nothing else on the consent agenda. Is there a motion on, on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
One second.
Excuse me.
Yes, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Oh, we have.
I was adding to the consent agenda, and we have public comments for that item as well.
Which item?
Item nine.
It, it was added to the?
There was a memo regarding item nine to the consent agenda.
Yeah, prior to the meeting, we had submitted a memo to change item nine to the consent agenda. It had been inadvertently included on the regular agenda.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought we had an amendment to item nine. Okay. All right. So then with that, with that addition to the consent items, so items two through nine, is that, is that consistent with your motion, Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
And Mr. Ledesma, your second?
Yes.
All right. Then with that, that motion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role on the consent agenda, including item nine?
Yes. And would you like to see the public comment for that as well?
Yes. Sorry. Yes, please.
One moment. Thank you. One comment was received for item nine from Dick Sestero.
All right. Mr. Sestero is with the project developer. All right. So Madam Clerk, then would you please call the, the role on the consent agenda?
Yes. Councilmember Orozco?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye.
That motion carries. That brings us into item eight, which is a public hearing to consider objections to the proposed removal of weeds.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Johnson with the Fire Department here. On April twenty-second of this year, city council adopted Resolution twenty thirty-three, which began the two thousand twenty weed abatement process. Notices were then mailed to property owners who have had or could have a weed abatement issue on their property. Tonight, it is respectfully recommended that city council open a public hearing to hear comments or objections to those notices and direct staff to proceed with the weed abatement program. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there questions for, for the fire marshal prior to opening the public hearing on the item? Seeing done, then we'll open the public hearing on item eight. And Madam Clerk, have we received any testimony or other comments under the public hearing for item eight?
Yes, we received one public comment from Mary Dejean. I'm sorry. One moment.
All right. Thank you. Just as a, and as a reminder, since this, this whole online format is still, for some folks, that may be the first time that you're viewing this meeting, the text of all, all public comments of into the council under any item are available in their entirety on the city website with the agenda and the video as well. All right. So we'll then close the public hearing and return it to the council for any further questions or discussion. Or for a motion, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
I just have a question. I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. The, the notices that were sent out, did they direct folks to, if they had any concerns to write, write to us, given the circumstance we're in online? Or was it just to, to have them find the place that how they would make a comment if they had? I'm just curious if we modified our way in which we're noticing things, given that we're meeting virtually.
On, on fires, and we haven't added or changed any of the direction from previous years.
Okay. But people would have an opportunity. If they were trying to come to the meeting, they would notice that they would be able to give public comment through a written notice to us.
Yeah, I would have to defer to Ms. Willock on that one. I'm not sure.
Yes. All public hearings are published in the news ledger two weeks prior to the meeting. And then it's posted on our Agenda Page One and throughout the website. The process for remitting public comment.
Okay. Thank you. And if there's no further comments from my colleagues, I'll move to action.
Right. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Sandin.
One second.
Thinking about Councilmember Ledesma. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for, for raising that question about, about the public hearing process in this, in this unusual period. I know that for, for the, for the weed abatement process, it isn't a regular annual process that most of the, most of the comments that we have received in the past have come in, in forms other than the appearance at the hearings as well. And the vast majority of these sorts of issues get resolved directly with the fire marshal anyway through that process. So if you have a concern or complaint, it's almost always more effective to go directly to the fire marshal first. It will, there's a very high likelihood it's going to get resolved. And then very, very rarely do folks bring it to the council as a whole. And usually that happens in writing as well. But, but the point is, is a really important one, and thank you for highlighting. Right. If there's no further discussion or debate on this item, then Madam Clerk, would you please call the role on item eight?
Yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So that motion carries five zero. That brings us to item ten, which is the weekly update and actions on the city's COVID nineteen response actions. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. So I wanted to, again, direct everyone's attention to attachment. One of the report will go quickly through some updates. A shorter report tonight, but still some important updates for you. So on the data for cases in, in West Sacramento and Yellow County, you can see there was actually, by the numbers in terms of a percentage change from last week, there were actually, there was actually an increase in the number of cases in West Sacramento by that percentage. So we have now a total of fifty-eight nineteen hospitalizations. That was as of five P M. On Monday, I don't believe that number has changed since then. But in, in countywide, there are one hundred and seventy-two now reported cases. Actually a downward trend since last week. So need to watch that as we go forward and looking at the trend line in particular. Looking at the curve and hopefully seeing a trend that hopefully continues to flatten and eventually, you know, go the other way once the effects of the shelter in place order are fully realized. So we're, we're continuing to watch that closely. For city services, the, the main trends have been continuing. We have a decreased amount of police and fire calls week to week. And that's been fairly consistent throughout this emergency situation. Public health order, we continue to work diligently. Our code enforcement manager, Josh Hurley, doing a very good job on the communication with businesses and other reports that we've received with the support of the police department also. And for the last week, we did have a, a high number of cases, thirty-seven new cases in the last week. Many of those were duplicates associated with retailers, ma- major retailers in town. And direct outreach was conducted, a lot of changes to the way stores have been operating and enforcing, keeping people compliant with the mask order, including their own employees. Much improvement has been made in the last week or two on that across all of our major retail locations. So still, we had thirty-seven cases last week that were unique cases that we're followed up on. On the call center data that's on the next page, we did have an uptick in, in calls, but I would point out that most of those had to do with service calls, public works, regular service calls, and then calls related to community development. Most of those, I assume, are associated with development, applications, and pending construction, things of that nature. So now I'm going to skip ahead to the, let's see, I'll be on page five. I wanted to talk about an update on, on testing and also more broadly to talk about the current status of the public health order and what Yellow County has been working on regarding to that. So first on testing, I reported last week that we were working with the county E O C on opening a couple of test centers countywide. That has moved forward. The first center is going to be, it's actually operational right now. It's in Woodland at the fairgrounds. It was felt that it was important to start at that location to get a better reach out to the broader county. But also, we were very much encouraging them to have a testing center in West Sacramento. So given the nature of how that operation works, they can't stand up to at the same time yet anyway. And so it's starting in Woodland. It's going to be there for four weeks. And then at the beginning of June, it will move over to West Sacramento. And I'm told they're testing anywhere between one hundred and fifty and two hundred people a day. Obviously, that number isn't going to get us where we need to be. Everyone is aware of that. County is working on different options to increase the volume of testing. But so far, this is what we have. We definitely need more in West SAC. We need more coordination with testing centers across the river and, and, and the follow-up to that is, of course, the contact tracing piece that wasn't planned to get into in detail tonight, but I just know that there's a lot of work ongoing on that. Mayor Cabaldin has been involved himself and in working on some plans for cross-river coordination as well. So now I'd like to jump to the Yellow County roadmap to recovery. And on a related note, many of, or most of you probably at least read about, if you didn't watch the governor's press conference on Monday. As you probably know by now, there was a, there was an announcement by the governor that the state is going to inch its way into what they're calling stage two, which allows for some relaxation of certain types of activities. Want to be really clear, though. On Monday, what the governor did was allowed curbside retail and associated manufacturing to start reopen once the state issues a modification to its health order, which is expected to be forthcoming soon. What he didn't do, and the state is not doing, is moving to the full implementation of stage two, which includes many other things such as restaurants, limited use of restaurants and, and other activities. Childcare, modified childcare operation is also in there. I think it's important to note that in, in, in terms of what this means for West Sacramento, what it means on the ground for people trying to decipher this and understand how things are operating in West SAC and in Yellow County. There really isn't a practical change in West SAC to the public health order right now. We, we have some retailers that would be affected and could take advantage of, of offering curbside retail. But what we don't have i- is, is the case in certain other cities in Yellow County is, say, a, a robust retail downtown environment where smaller retails could take advantage of that. So in terms of what it means on the ground here for residents and businesses, I really want to emphasize that we're continuing to implement the public health order and, you know, asking people to continue their diligence and taking it very seriously and and doing all the things that we've been encouraging everyone to do through this time. Know the council probably want to discuss that a little bit tonight. But we continue to watch it. We are working with Yellow County on the implementation of the roadmap to recovery. The governor did make it clear in his announcement that on a county-by-county basis, counties have the option to prepare readiness plans if they meet certain criteria based on cases and other data. They, there are options to go further along into stage two. However, I know that's a, that's an issue that the Board of Supervisors is looking at. But like I said, again, I'll, I'll just emphasize that as of right now, there's really no practical change in West SAC based on the governor's latest announcement and the, the current activity in Yellow County. So we, we have staff to continue to work with the county staff on implementation of that roadmap to recovery. We are working on guidelines for types of businesses that would be covered as that starts to evolve, and we'll continue to be involved in that as well. So I believe that, actually, I wanted to give a couple of quick other updates on in the Housing and Social Services section. So first of all, the Old Community Benefit Fund continues to be very active in that process. As you can see from my update here, there are over fifty-five, fifty-seven total applications in that first round received by the foundation. There are some meetings next week. Vice Mayor Sandin will be involved in that process, and so will our Parks Director Tracy Michael in reviewing those applications. And ultimately, making recommendations that will be decided on by the, by the Leadership Committee that the Vice Mayor participates on. So that's forthcoming soon. And the Great Plates Delivered Program on the next page is something I believe I included in the report last week, just as a, as a heads up that it was evolving. So the way that program works, it's essentially a state-run or a state program that makes the availability of reimbursement for cities and counties to partner with restaurants to deliver meals to seniors, qualified seniors on an income basis. It, it's very administrative intense, but also there is some risk of having to upfront all the costs and hoping that the reimbursement works out. And so for that reason, a lot of smaller cities like us have been a little bit hesitant to jump into a program like that. However, we are in coordination with the, the county E O C, working with the other cities in the county on a potential implementation of a program in Yellow County. I don't want to represent that that's, that's likely to happen, but it's at least being looked at. As of right now, the only requirement is to submit a letter of interest to the state. And the state is looking at both extending that program and hopefully supplementing the funding and and revising some of the, the guidelines because they are extensive to get a little more assurance about things like reimbursement. And the county included all of those comments in their letter of intent that they submitted, I believe. That happened last week. So we'll continue to monitor that, and I'll update you if a, a program ends up moving ahead in Yellow County. So I believe that's all I was going to cover tonight in terms of the updates. I'm going to turn it over to the council and see if there's any questions or discussion about the current state of the public health order in our county. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Laurel. So we're gonna, this, this is a more minor item than we would normally take up because we'd be here COVID nineteen on a weekly basis and a special, in a special meeting that's occurring twice as often as this meeting. So this is a, it's going to be a relatively quick check-in, but we are going to now do our, our round, our single round of of our questions and comments from members of the council. Do any members have a question or a comment this evening on the report? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I do have a couple of questions. One is on the childcare funding. I do know that the governor had allocated fifty million to go to local jurisdictions. And he established a statewide portal, a portal on the state's website. I checked out the portal. It shows that there are childcare programs available. And just making sure that, you know, we're, we're connected. You know, whether it be the, you know, with other resources, the, the resource and referral networks, I think, are the lead agency in the county. So we can just keep track of what is accessible in in West Sacramento as we, you know, monitor what's happening in other areas. On the concerns that have been raised or the complaints about non-compliance, the one that I, I received some attention on from individuals in the community has been the Walmart. And it, it was originally posted, and then I received separate contact about that. And I did go to Walmart myself and looked, looked into the situation. I did notice that employees, some employees were not wearing masks. The entrance that I went in, there was no check on whether people are going in with or without a mask. And there was lax, you know, very lax compliance with the social distancing. It wasn't crowded. But it, it did appear that way. And if we can just keep on top of that, continue with speaking with management, just letting them know that this is real important because if we start moving forward, I think we need to start seeing the stores or the retailers show, demonstrate, you know, that they're going to be in compliance. And it's not going to be taking a toll on whether it be code enforcement or first responders to have to go back over and over again to make them compliant. It's not something we, we, you know, I think have the capacity to do. We hope that, you know, on an honor basis, they can comply with that. And I think that's really necessary on our roadmap that we see from the retailers working together to demonstrate that. So that's just my firsthand experience based on the complaints I've heard. And I appreciate, you know, all the work that's been done to establish the testing centers here in West Sacramento and look forward to seeing how that rolls out and you know, appreciate that we're getting, you know, direct access to that. And any information you can share on the antibody testing, whether it be, you know, if it's not local here, but any updates on that, that would be very helpful to have. They have had received questions about that, but I, I don't know what the status is on, you know, working with E O C, if they're going to be establishing that in the future, or do they have to go through their, you know, primary care physician to, you know, to get a prescription to get tested. I'm not, I, I don't know what that, what that situation looks like, but that's, I think, the contact tracing. You know, whether it be somebody who's been, you know, tested for having the, you know, the virus, or, you know, they demonstrate that they've had it, and so they could be tracked, you know, as having it in the past. So that might be helpful. I just wanted to express some thoughts about that. Thank you.
If I could respond to each of those in kind of reverse order, my understanding is the testing that's being stood up right now in Yellow County and elsewhere is really about testing people for whether they have COVID currently, not about antibody tests. That's, that's something that's still evolving. Certainly, that would be very useful to have. But, you know, I think, as you know, it's, it's largely or very much so out of our control, but definitely if that becomes available, I'll be the first to ask for it to be in Sacramento as it gets rolled out in Yellow County. On the topic of enforcement, you mentioned the particular retailer. Wasn't going to get into detail on it, but we have been very active working with that, with that store. Code enforcement and has paid a number of visits, worked very closely with the management. I'm not, I'm not sure which day that was, but the reports we have now are that those controls have been put into place. Employees are required to wear masks. In fact, that's, that's a national policy now for Walmart. And, and also same goes to the customers. They have put controls in at the entrances. They've actually also received a, a letter from the county notifying them of the mask order. So I, I can assure you, we are taking that one most seriously. Given that it is our, probably our highest traffic store in the city. And they have been cooperative. But it is an ongoing effort, and, and we're very much on that one. Josh Hurley in particular has been very active there. On childcare, I'll, I'll kind of just point out that I, I think that's one area where we've been a little bit ahead of the state in terms of tracking the availability and setting up those systems for people to get linked up childcare. I talked about that in the, the previous report. You can see the updates are still in there with the links to our network and our sort of brokering people who need childcare with those providers. What I can't speak to tonight, but we can check on is how much coordination there's been with the state in terms of making sure that the same information we have is getting up to their, to their webpage. So I, I can follow up on that. So thank you.
And thank you. Thanks, Councilmember Guerrero. Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the Yellow Community Benefit Fund, the report, as reflected by the city managers, accurate, the reviews will be happening next week, and it was, there were fifty-seven applications. the reviews will be happening next week and it was, there were fifty-seven applications. So it's high, of high interest. In addition, the, the Yellow Community Foundation and our own West Sac Community Foundation are both focusing this week on the big day of giving, which had a public comment beginning of the meeting on that topic. And it, the focus this week is to, is to have people invest in nonprofits and to support nonprofits. So I just wanted to share that reminder with our colleagues, but it's an all-hands-on effort all across the, the county and the region tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin. All right, and I, I, this is going to be, this may be the, one of the, that we're entering one of the more, even more challenging periods of, of our, our response to the COVID-19 situation, which may seem paradoxical be given the improvements in our success as a community in flattening the curve with respect to the surge that we were trying to prevent in the hospital system. And I, I know we've all heard, you know, folks who said, look, we, we won. Let's get back to normal as soon as possible. And I think, you know, we all, we all hope to get to that point. We didn't beat the virus, though. We just beat the surge and we are at, still at significant risk given the virus is no weaker than it was before in the population and is a bit stronger of a, of a, of a resurgence. And one of the reasons why the testing issue is so important, I'm glad that both the manager and Councilmember Guerrero emphasized this, is that every, every decision framework, whether it's the, the governor's road, his roadmap, Yellow County's roadmap now and before, our own articulation of our policies, CDC, Johns Hopkins, the entire public health community have all said, there are certain criteria that must be met as you move from stage to stage. And it's important to, to articulate those criteria in advance so that you aren't, so that we don't, we don't fall into the trap of making decisions based on our emotions at the moment or discussion board or public opinion polls, but really focused on, on rigorous decision-making based on that evidence. And I, I think many people now can cite what those criteria are, thanks to the, to the frameworks that have been articulated. That is, that we had to, we have to have stable or declining cases and hospitalizations and deaths. That we need to have sufficient testing at a significant level, whether that's point one or one percent or two percent of the population on a daily basis for testing. And we have to have sufficient contact tracing to reach ten contacts per day for each positive case. So the metrics that have been articulated are consistent and reasonably clear across all of these different organizations, from the county to the state, to the, to the Center for Disease Control at the federal level. And I, I think one, one thing that we'll have to pay attention to in our community is that although the statewide standards that the governor articulated on Monday apply at the county level, all of the governor's metrics are looking at county by county. And Yellow County may be on track to reaching some of those metrics sooner than some other counties. The county as a whole has had relatively stable hospitalizations. It has had declining cases and it has had a, a stability in its rate of death. And Yellow County, as the manager has, has, has indicated, has launched at least modest testing, not at the level that is, is expected under any, any of these frameworks, but modest testing is in place. When you drill down, though, on the, to the geography of the community that we serve, the numbers are, are not the same. And so we have had, over the last couple of weeks, we've had an increase in the number of hospitalizations. To emphasize, I want to emphasize that the actual number is not a huge number. We're talking about nineteen hospitalizations, but seven of those nineteen, so more than a third of them have been in the last two and a half weeks. And our case, case numbers are somewhat stable, but have not been consistently declining as they have in countywide or elsewhere. And we don't, at this point, have any system of testing in the city of West Sacramento or within a few minutes. And so we don't meet either the health or the, the follow-up criteria that are necessary in order to move to stage, fully into stage two. And so those discussions with the county and with others are ongoing. But I, I simply want to emphasize it because it's, these aren't, these aren't numbers games. They're about making sure that we are protecting our community. We cannot be in a situation where we lift, lift restrictions that have worked to this point in May while we don't have testing coming until June. And we may find then in June that we have a rampant epidemic in the city of West Sacramento as a result of not having had sufficient testing and tracing in advance. And so the best way for us to be able to, to achieve even modest openings, e- even the, the very modest things that the governor has described that might happen next week or the week or the week after that, the, the, the best way for us to achieve that, number one, is to fully stabilize and decline our hospitalization rate. Over, that is something we have very little control over, but testing, we also have very little control over, but someone does. And so it is absolutely imperative that we dramatically increase the amount of testing from, from virtually nothing to, you know, to, to many, to, to allowing many residents in this community to be able to get tested if they have symptoms, but also if they do not, particularly if they're going to be going back to work. So testing, testing, testing has to be a priority. And right now, we are, we are sand, we are the, in, in the sandwich between Woodland, which has some testing, Sacramento, which has the statewide pilot on testing as well as regular testing going on, but we are in the middle. That's a, that's not just an issue for West Sacramento because we exchange with the city of Sacramento nearly ten thousand people a day crossing the river in both directions for, for work and for other purposes. And so it's not as though the, uh, West Sacramento itself can, is an island in this space, but we're going to have to tackle, we are tackling that challenge, as the manager has mentioned, and it demands that we, that we solve it before we can move even to the modest improvements in stage three that the governor has articulated on a statewide basis. And, and our, our conversations with the county on this are, are ongoing. As the manager said, I've also been, Mayor Steinberg and I have been convening the public health officers in both counties and the leadership of the community colleges throughout the city and cities of Sacramento and West Sacramento to work through options and alternatives on contract tracing that would produce a sufficient contract, contact raising workforce, but also deal with the, the large number of folks who are either unemployed or underemployed as a result of the crisis and link those opportunities to, to career pathways in, in health and other allied fields as well. There's a lot of moving parts in that work, so I, I, I don't want to be in a position of, of a promising result, an outcome that we're not going to be able to achieve. But a lot of, a lot of very good and smart people, in addition to me and Mayor Steinberg, are working on this project with the help of some local foundations, regional foundations as well, in order to bring it to reality. And if, because it will be, if, if, when we are able to deliver the level of testing that we need in West Sacramento, we will need a, a qualified, a, a, a force of contact tracers. But we also want to do right by those contact tracers and make sure that they are on the path to, to economic resilience and sustainability after the, after the surge in demand for contact tracing diminishes. So, thanks so much and, and Mr. Manager, again, thank you and your, and the team and the staff for all of your work and for, for members of our community and small businesses that are inventing and recreating themselves every moment. The West Sac Tankout Campaign is just one small example, the nonprofit organizations that, as Mayor Pro Tim Sandin has mentioned, tomorrow is the ba- big day of giving. And we have so many local organizations that, that, that deserve and need our support more than ever. And some of them are the obvious ones that we will, that we're, that we all have in our hearts and minds right now as a result of the issues that we're talking about in this agenda item that are providing direct services and shelter and food and other support. But also, we never, let, let's not forget that organizations that are doing other things in our community, their, their resources are being, have been cut off because they can't have their annual banquet or dinner that is their one fundraiser. Foundations and other philanthropies are, are focusing their giving on frontline services. And so whether it's the, the Friends of the Library or the Historical Society or the River City Rowing Club, there's just so many organizations in our community that depend on us as the members of the community to support them. And even if, even if they're not the ones delivering food on Saturdays, they also need our support too. And so I just would join the, the whole council, which has always been a big supporter of this big day. And Mayor Pro Tim Sandin, who's the, you know, the one of the top regional leaders on the big day of giving to, to, to open our hearts and a little bit of our checkbooks, to checkbooks to the extent that we can't, that each of us might be able to in order to, to keep the civic infrastructure and the, and the people and the, and the volunteers of our community to make, make West Sacramento what it is and make us different from every other place. Keep them not just alive, but thriving and working to rebuild a resilient West Sacramento community. All right, so with that, thank you very much. We don't have an action on item ten this week, so we'll proceed to item eleven, which is the council calendar. Assistant City Manager Berlin.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. No real updates on the councils tonight. The only thing is that on, on Thursday, May twenty-second, May twenty-first, we will have a planning commission meeting and that'll be by teleconference.
Thank you. Any questions on the calendar? None, City Manager report?
Yes, just a couple of items. One thing I meant to mention in my prior, prior update is, in addition to the budget update next week, we'll be bringing a proposed extension to our local emergency declaration. Another item on there will be the West Capital project, bringing forward the proposed bid award. And finally, on a related note on West Capital, just want to announce that I believe tomorrow or Friday, we will be closing on the permanent supportive housing project on West Capital Avenue. So construction should commence shortly after that. But as you know, that's been a project we've been working on for some time. We actually had an item on the council agenda tonight to amend the loan agreement, but some good news there on that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laurel. Any questions on the city manager's report? City Attorney report?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Staff direction from members of the council? We have no future agenda item request, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero that the meeting stands adjourned. Although, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roseco.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sandin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye.
With that, the motion carries five to zero. And with that, the, the meeting stands adjourned. Thanks and have a safe evening.
Thank you.